All right, we'll call the meeting to order. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access channel 18 and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. All right, public and select board information.
Amy, do I need to formally convene the finance?
You have a quorum, right?
So the Finance Committee is meeting jointly with the Select Board this evening. Thank you.
All right. Select Board information? Jamie, no? Jared, do you have anything?
The only thing that I have is this ongoing mystery that two months ago, a package washed up on our rack line and it was sent to Jackie at Town Hall with the right address. And I don't know how it got there or where it came from, but I left it outside today.
Okay. It washed up?
That's what I got. I got our moment of humor here. Yeah, literally washed up in one of the storms.
Was it really big?
Yeah, it's outside under the mailbox.
Yeah, we, that's what I opened up today. It was two file boxes that I had ordered from a company. But how did it get in the ocean? I mean, the bay. I mean, the estuary. I mean, the marsh, whatever it is.
I was trying to give some light information to set the mood.
Oh, my God, Jared, that's funny. And they were paper, like, the inside was paper, so it's drying in my office now. We'll see if we can salvage it.
Wonderful.
All right, I have a couple things. I don't know if anybody got the notice about Red Tide in the salt pond. Salt Pond and Salt Pond River only so far, not out in the marsh, so.
Is it posted?
It is on the town website.
Is it posted at the salt pond?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, it's down, I know it's down on the trail, anyway. And the vessel storage lottery will be held tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., live on channel 18, for some exciting, you know, reality TV here in Eastham. Drawing, you know, numbers out of a hamster ball. It's fun. We try to make the best of it. And the Elks is going to host a mobile food pantry for veterans.
Oh, nice.
Starting tomorrow and running every second and fourth Tuesday from 10:00 to 1:00. So any veterans can go and get, they're going to have, I guess, perishables, meats, other shelf-stable items for pickup. And Al says to say hello from Africa. He's in Africa. He was tracking white rhino, white and black rhinos. They're trying to catch poachers. So I hope he doesn't, like, catch them personally.
Yeah, yeah. We worry.
Yes. But he's out there doing good, so. All right, so now we'll move to the public. Any public information?
Hi, good evening. I'm Scott Carey from Fisher Road. I am the town moderator. I just wanted to let everyone at home know that town meeting is six weeks from tonight. So we're very excited to be back in the high school this year. And I imagine over the next couple of weeks, with school vacation running on the late side, we'll be getting together with the town clerk, the town administrator, our esteemed police and fire, and the facilities manager at the high school. And just for clarification, will you set that up, Jackie?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. And I know the police and fire are excited for that meeting. So that, with that being said, I also was asked to, and I will do it again at town meeting, to remind people that there are going to be some appointment opportunities on many of the committees, including possibly one on the Finance Committee. And so our leader of the search committee is Amy Hackworth, and she's asked me to give you her email address. It's H-A-C-K-W-O-R-T-H-Amy, A-M-Y, at hotmail.com. So anyone that has an interest at watching at home or in the audience could certainly contact her about potential positions. With that being said, I just always thought I would check in again with the board and to see if there's anything specific that you would like included in town meeting from a celebrations status of anything, you know, we've done different things in the past between musical accompaniment and so on and so forth. So I have a couple of things that, or one specific that I would like to do, and our fire chief is here, so we do have a new assistant fire chief, and I think it's worthy of the community taking another look at what a big event that was for. So I'll keep my plans on that in front of you. But I have nothing specific else unless you guys do. I just, as far as for everyone at home, when will the warrant be available for people to review?
The draft warrant is online now in the Select Board packet, but it goes to the printers April 1st, so anything that we post after April 1st is the warrant.
Okay, so then the warrants will again go in the post offices. Everyone will get one, so everyone will have a nice month to take a look at that and get ready for town meeting. So anything else from the board as far as?
Oh, go ahead, Jamie. Thanks. I know, I know it's generally when there's kind of like big issue items on the warrant, we've tended to push to have daycare, childcare. Is that something that we, that we could do for the meeting or, you know?
We can try. It's, I think we can do school age. It's hard for us to do under-school age, but I will ask Christine if we can try and arrange something.
Yeah, I know previous years when we had done it, we used some high school volunteers that needed some community service hours.
And it was really helpful for.
Okay. One thing I noticed on the, the back of the draft warrant with the rules for town meeting, it says something about the field.
Oh, yeah, so we'll change that.
Okay. Yeah, no, definitely not going to be on the field, no. But in addition to, to Jamie's point, I think it would be a great opportunity to maybe three, two, and one week ahead of, you know, use the code RED system to kind of alert people. So some of the people that might be getting in, back into town, who might not, you know, show up to late April and say, oh, my God, town meeting is Monday, it might be a great opportunity. I don't know if that's.
So doing one like a week out?
Yeah, yeah, or two weeks out and just say, hey, you know, really try to, you know, bump up, you know, the attendance this year. I think there'll be, you know, opportunity for people to get there, but there'll also be, I'm sure, some people with some apprehension about being back inside with a big crowd, so.
All right.
I have nothing else specific unless you good folks have anything.
No, I did, Facebook's updated with the event, too, so it's on the town Facebook page, too, with the date and time and everything as well, so.
Excellent. Thank you for doing that.
And if you need me to kind of reshare it or anything like that, just let me know.
That would be wonderful.
Yep.
Good.
On the town warrant draft, I had a question. I saw that we'd posted somewhere that it was available on our website, and I was not able to find it on our website. Maybe that's because of my Samsung problems, but I was just curious where that is and if we can get a better look at that for people.
Right now, it's in the Select Board packet for each meeting, and I sent a flash out with the link to the packet so that you could just click on that link, which I will continue to do. Once it is formal and official, we'll post it on the main page of the website, but as long as it's in draft form and it's changing, we just keep it in the packet.
Okay, I just figured it'd be nice to give people a heads up and stuff if they wanted to chime in on these meetings before we make decisions, but, okay.
All right.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
All right, move on to appointments. Eversource storm update response.
Ronit.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hello, welcome.
Thanks for having me. It's Ronit.
Ronit, I'm sorry.
Ronit Goldstein. Nice to see you, Jackie, in person, finally, and Rich as well, members of the board, and I think we have part of the Finance Committee here, so thanks for, and those via Zoom and watching through Zoom and other channels, I assume. Thanks for having me here this evening. My name is Ronit Goldstein. I'm with Eversource Energy. I've been with the company just about four years and have covered the Cape and Martha's Vineyard and a couple of gas and electric towns, actually, on the South Shore since the end of, the spring of 2019. And I actually just told both chiefs that I remember that I was here in February of 2020 to speak with your Conservation Commission about a cormorant concern that they had with one of your ponds. So it's nice to be back here in person and nice to see everyone, and thank you, Lori, for communicating with me as well. I thought it made sense and I, so I'm, I'm not going to do this because they're in the room, but they're going to think I'm doing this because they're in the room, but I do want to give a shout out to your public safety officials to, so I, when I first started, I worked with Chief Farenkoff and Chief Culhawick, and they've both since retired, and I've had the pleasure of working with both these wonderful chiefs, Chief Bohannon and Chief Keen, and I want to give a shout out to them and to the, their employees and to your DPW, Silvio, because, you know, without those partners in the communities, we couldn't do what we need to do. You know, during a blue sky, we couldn't do it, and during, certainly during what we refer to as a gray or even a black sky, is one of the terminologies that are used at the utility. So sort of a shout out to you guys, and I would have done that whether you were here or not, just so you know. But it is a, I do have, I feel very fortunate to work with really, really great partners and stakeholders in the communities on the Cape, and these guys are top-notch. So I thought it made sense after two significant, pretty much back-to-back storms, one with mild temps and one with really, really cold, that Saturday night was pretty cold in January. So I thought it made sense to come and speak with you, to give you an opportunity to hear a little bit about how we prepare for a storm at Eversource, and then just have an opportunity to really ask questions and see if you have concerns or things maybe that you've always wondered and never had an opportunity to ask someone from the company. But I will say, since I started with the company, we've definitely enhanced our storm response and storm preparedness. They've always prepared for storms and they've always watched the weather 24/7, and there's some things that have always been in place. But certainly over the last year, some things that are notable is a two-way portal called the Municipal Hub that we rolled out this past year. There used to be a portal for communities, but there was no communicate, it was not a two-way communication. They could just view, and it was certainly helpful. I'm not even sure if you guys were aware of the previous portal, the chiefs that are here, but the Municipal Hub is an opportunity for single points of contact, typically one person or two people in, in the town, and they're typically the designated public safety officials to report. The critical facilities that are earmarked in your town will show up in that portal, but they can define specific priorities that the town may have, and then their dispatch can also enter any police and fire calls, whether it's a blocked road or a wired down or a transformer on fire. Those are things that typically you would call in. Now they have the opportunity to not only call it in, but if they prefer to have a quicker way to kind of one after the other, they can enter it into the portal. So that's one enhancement. You've certainly seen a large number, I've had some call it like an armada of Eversource crews, and I will say that there's always a strong representation on the outer Cape, and that's really thanks to the fact that I think the company has recognized, and certainly public safety officials all the way out to P-Town have always said, by the way, are you going to be staging anywhere in the outer Cape? Because we, they, you know, they recognize, and I've certainly always mentioned to them, you've got to get past the Orleans Rotary. It's not going to help. Nickerson Park is not going to, it's not going to work. You've got to get past the Rotary because, you know, with, certainly with the last storm, the elements were so, you know, it was so severe that, you know, the roads, I don't tell you, you were all, we were all here. I was, I was in Yarmouth, but the roads were so bad that to get trucks just out here and to get trucks even in towns where they were, to get them up hills, we really needed to partner with communities for snow removal, for salting. You know, one example, we partnered with the county that helped us with Barnstable, the Cape Cod Gateway Airport, I think they were called now, the Barnstable Municipal, formerly Barnes Municipal, to help us remove snow so that we could get to a set of poles that would, we could conduct part of the repair to restore the hospital, Cape Cod Hospital. So those were partnerships that we had examples in that storm. And in the fall, certainly, there were countless examples of working with, you know, there was much more tree damage in the fall, in October, and as you probably recall, the restoration was a little bit longer. It was really significant. I can go on and on about storm response and how we prepare, but I will tell you that a standard is, is to look in advance, and when we see something coming in the next couple, few days, we start to secure resources, external resources, because they become, they become scarce the longer you wait. So, you know, we do it early and we prepare for what the forecasts tell us, and then we really respond to what actually, we respond to the impact. And sometimes those two are not aligned, but most of the time, they get it pretty, pretty accurate. I welcome any, you know, questions or, I don't, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything, or am I just calling you? If the board wants to.
Putting them on the spot.
I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I kept this as free-flowing rather than doing a presentation because I think it's better.
Ronit, before you sit down, I, I saw, and I think residents really appreciated the text messages that are at least new to us this year. We've never had that level of text messaging before, and it was really quite precise and amazing. So thank you for that. I don't know if that's part of the new portal or some other new system, but.
No, so I think you just reminded me two things. I'm going to do a plug for the app.
Yep.
So whether you're on an iPhone or, what's the other one? Samsung, apparently?
Android.
Galaxy?
Android.
An Android, yep. You can download the Eversource app. You can pay your bill through it. You can sign up to receive alerts. Even if you don't want to do that, you really can choose through your account how you want to be communicated with. You want a phone call? You want an email? You want a text? You want it all? You can, you can, you can have it all. But I do know that they were plugging in, that's somewhat of a manual process during a storm, so if it's, you know, there's a pole that's hit during a regular blue sky, but there's outages, that's an automatically driven estimated time of restoration or what we call an ETR. During a storm, it's someone, it's folks in the field or folks in our dispatch that are plugging those in to try to update them.
They did an amazing job.
I'm glad to hear that. Some, some, it's funny, some folks didn't like the frequent because they got so excited and then the, then the time would change, so I'm happy to hear you liked it, because some, some folks had, you know, you can't, some people, it's a matter of preference.
Well, I think most people would be skeptical when it's at 11:13. I mean, it was that precise sometimes, but you said, okay, well, if I have it by 2:00, I'm good, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm glad, I'm glad to see that feedback, and I definitely encourage folks to go online and see what we have available as far as communication. One more thing I'm going to say, where'd he go? Before, is that one, one main thing, so we've always had liaisons that communicate with, so my storm role is very similar to my blue sky role. I sit in Yarmouth and I manage a group of liaisons that speak with the communities. And then any of the priorities I bring up to, and I'm monitoring the system as well and checking with our dispatchers on estimated times of restoration so that whatever isn't plugged into the system, I can communicate with the liaisons, and then they can communicate with all of the 15 communities, 23, excuse me, 21, including the six communities on the, on the Vineyard that report out into Yarmouth as well. What we did differently in these last two storms is that we embedded liaisons in each emergency operations center. So you had a liaison both in October and in January. That's not something we always do, but it, it could be the, the way we go in the future. I know communities on the Cape certainly appreciated, and the Cape was hit, you know, twice, which wasn't the case in other areas in, in the state.
Yeah.
So I think that's worked effectively.
Well, I'll echo what Jackie said about getting the text messages. That's really nice. But you don't really actually need the app even to get that.
That's right.
As long as you just report on the website and you can sign up as to how you want to be notified. But, well, I have to admit, I was in Florida when the storm hit, but.
Lucky you.
It was particularly cold down there, just to.
But she was getting the messages and checking in.
I was getting the messages.
Yeah, one thing they can see on the app or on the website, just depends on how you like looking at it, is the outage map. So you can get some, the same information that you're getting, but if you're away and you're not signed up, or if you're here, you know, you can look and get some pretty, there's a little bit of a, maybe 10 to 15-minute delay as it, as it flows through our outage management system, but it's pretty, you know, it's, it's pretty close to real time.
Yeah, because I noticed the map on the website isn't as detailed as it used to be. It used to show, you know, more detail about where, now, now it's just like a little bubble, and you can click on it and see what that town has, but it's not quite as, so I'm glad to hear that about the app.
Yeah, you, and I'm an Eversource customer as well, so I agree, it didn't used to be, it really wasn't helpful in the past, like in the storms of 2018.
I like to look at the list and then find the town and see the numbers, and that's mine.
And then you could, you can drill down into the level of seeing where that outage is.
Okay. Oh, that's good to know.
So, yeah, and if they have a cause, they put the cause in. If it's, you know, if it's a tree, if it's an animal, fortunately, that sometimes you can see as a cause, you know, squirrels and those types of, can get into equipment, unfortunately.
Sparky.
Or birds, but, you know, it's, it's, yeah, not, not, not a great arrangement there, but if there is a cause, you can definitely see, or equipment malfunction, that's if something, you know, had an issue, usually because of the weather, so.
I know a lot of people, when we have storms like that and they see all the trucks, they say, why don't they just bury the lines? And everyone knows it's extremely expensive to bury lines, but at what point, I mean, you know, that, that's got to cost a lot of money to get those trucks from who knows where.
So that is probably the most common question, most popular question I get anywhere I go. And so the first answer is not even the expense. We are not the only ones on the pole. People need to remember that. So for us to go underground, it means that Verizon and Comcast and any other attaches, could be a fire alarm or, you know, some municipal attachment, some other, fiber, that's right. Everybody has to agree to go underground, so that's number one. Number two, it definitely, if we had all the time and the money in the world, it is, it's a balance, you know, because that would then be a cost that's borne by the end user, and it's, it's a, it's a high, you know, it's not, and we can't do it quickly. The second point that I would make is that just because it's underground doesn't mean it doesn't have faults. And then to detect that fault is usually more difficult underground and takes time because you can't dig until everybody else marks out where their infrastructure is. So sometimes it could be a couple hours before you can even start.
Yeah, I knew there were good reasons, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it, the cost is one, but I think one that's notable is that we aren't the only, I think people forget that it's not just electricity that's on the poles, so that would be definitely a huge initiative.
Yeah, gotcha.
So.
All right, well, thank you. Any, you have questions, Jamie?
Yeah, thank you very much. This is helpful. I guess I have two questions. The first one was about preventative tree removal in residential neighborhoods in advance prior to any kind of storms coming. I've noticed that, I think that you've started to do a bit more of that.
Yeah, me too.
Is that going to be a continued program? And, you know, what time, is there a particular time of year or anything people can expect? Because I think that that's really helpful for people.
Yeah, so our vegetation management, i.e. our certified arborists, but we call them, who knew what vegetation management, you know, meant before I started at the utility, certainly not me, but they file an annual, it's a yearly operational plan with MDR, which is the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources. And one of the things, so they filed, we get permission to cut a certain canopy around the lines. That's one program, so it's cyclical. I, I don't know when they'll be in what area in town, but typically, and, and those are not just in the distribution lines, which are the lower poles and wires that you see in the road, but it's also in the higher voltage transmission lines. We do the same, so we take, those are more along the right-of-way to make sure that some of the vegetation doesn't become incompatible and disrupt service in the transmission line. Those are, those are ongoing. There are arborists, Eversource arborists on the Cape every day of every year, so that's never stops because the trees keep growing, right? The other program is that we do have on our website, if residents have questions about trees on their property or trees in their area, there is a form on their Eversource website where they can, you know, ask to make an appointment with an arborist to come out and do sort of an assessment. We can't remove on private property, but if we have a sign-off from the homeowner, we can. And then obviously, there's, there's, there's areas where it's sensitive, and certainly I know on the outer Cape, the trees are, are loved, and, but at the same time, there's this, right, this balance. What's that, the balance? Well, it's a, like a dilemma that you have because you, and our arborists certainly love trees, too, but they, they, they are 90% of the reason for outages is trees and branches and, and leaves. So we do work with homeowners that want to do some sort of mitigation if we're taking down trees, you know, on their property that's on the right-of-way, and we'll do replanting. It's really just on a case-by-case, but we do, do do that as well. So the, the long answer and the short answer is that yes, that's ongoing.
Great. And my other question was, I think there was a pop-up kind of hub that existed in Eastham during the, the weather event where you had a little team that came into Eastham, is that correct? And worked with our emergency management? Is that going to be ongoing? Because I think that was probably really helpful to have such clear communication. It made it so much easier for the municipality to work in a way that would be effective.
Yeah, so during, it's part of what I noted before, the liaison, but in addition to the liaison that was seated in, I was, was Amy in the police department or in the, I'm thinking?
Police.
Police department. And then we had, I think, Warren in, in January. Part of that, so that's really to sit side by side and communicate with the chiefs, but we had, we've called it different names. It's either been a, a community task force, which is a line crew, a tree crew, and a troubleshooter. We're now calling them the Public Safety Division. They keep changing names, but I think from moving forward, it's going to be a Public Safety Division that we deploy to each town to work either with Public Safety and sometimes with DPW to go site to site.
That's great.
So they're, they're working on fine-tuning that process, but those folks are dispatched out of, right next to where I am seated, so it's, it's good on the, you know, on the inside, you know, to be able to be close to it in Yarmouth and then, and see it on the receiving end where the liaison's saying, yep, they're, they're here and they're doing this and they're doing that, and you get that feedback loop. So it's, it has worked well, and I know we've had a lot of practice with the storms, so we're definitely fine-tuning that.
Yeah, that's much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right. Before Adam comes up, let me see if Jared has any questions. Jared, do you have any questions?
Just keep hitting the mic. No, nothing for me. Thank you. I was honestly impressed because I know that both these sets of storms were pretty brutal, and, you know, we saw that the company was moving all the resources well ahead of time and has it figured out, so I think we're all grateful for that. You know, we don't like being out of power for a few days, but we understand that it was a, it was a pretty monumental task, especially in October, and we're just glad that it was warm enough out.
Thank you. To give you, yeah, to give you perspective, I'm just going to say one more thing. The storm in October, we classify, and it's not an arbitrary classification, it's actually, I, I have to believe that all the utilities use this. Five is blue sky, four is up to, say, 50,000 customers, and it's a state designation. A three is up to 75, a two is, is, I'm sorry, is upwards of 75. A two is upwards of 150,000 customers, and then one, of course, is pretty catastrophic, upwards of, I don't even know, because I haven't had a level one here, but the one in October was a level two. And that was over 150,000 customers on the Cape alone, and then about 80,000 on the South Shore. So Plymouth, the town that I live in is on the South Shore, I had no power as well, so that whole area was out as well. So that, there hadn't been a class two or a level two storm since 2013.
Wow.
It gives you, so sometimes it feels really severe in your area, but that, those, those two really were, in January was level three, so, and that was only because it was just the Cape. You know, you guys hit the jackpot, but, yeah, but, but that just gives you some perspective. So we got through it.
Yeah, appreciate the metrics. Thank you for that.
Sure, sure. I think it just gives people a little bit of perspective, and that, those designations are not just the numbers that are out, but how many days of restoration. So we anticipate with those levels that you're going to have two days, four days, you know, and, and you get more severe. I'm actually quite astounded by, because of the severity in January and the road conditions, I can't believe that we got most towns out by Sunday night. I was pretty, I was pretty stunned.
Yeah.
So.
Well, thank you.
Great, thank you, thanks for having me.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just take a couple minutes of your time. I just wanted to be here tonight to support Ronit, hear her presentation, and kind of reiterate that what a great relationship we have with Eversource at this point. As I was thinking about this tonight, I was thinking, you know, what do we, what do we need from Eversource? And of course, the obvious answer is power restoration, but during an event, which we seem to be doing, you know, every, every other week now, we really need timely and accurate information. That's the biggest thing. I like to think that these public safety agencies here in Eastham and the community as a whole can really handle anything, but we need to know what we're dealing with so that we can prepare for it and, and accomplish the goal of handling it. I think that, and I'm in my 22nd year here, I've never seen the communication from EverSource as good as it is right now. So, and that's in, in part to, to Roni and her team, but I think the company as a whole just has made that a priority. And, you know, we, we get the, the community liaisons right in our building, so we're not worried about making a phone call that goes straight to voicemail. We can't get in touch with them, they didn't return our email, they're sitting right next to us.
They know exactly who to call and-
Exactly. That public safety task force that you mentioned, Jamie, it was huge in the first storm we had back in October, going out and handling some of the problem areas that we were having difficulty with. So I just, I can't say enough about how EverSource has come along and they've kind of met the challenge of, of the communication aspect, which is, which is most important.
Great, well, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thanks, everybody. Let's hope we don't have any more.
This is great.
Yeah. All right, next on the agenda is a public hearing. I'll go ahead and read the public notice. In accordance with section C6-5 and C6-2, paragraph 3, the Eastham Home Rule Charter, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 21st, 2022, at 5:30 PM at the Eastham Town Hall, 2500 State Highway, Eastham, Mass., 02642, and by remote participation on the proposed FY23 operating budget and the FY24-28 five-year capital improvement plan, covering all departments and the Eastham Elementary School, including vehicles, technology upgrades, and improvements to municipal buildings. All amounts and items shown in said capital improvement plan are estimates and are subject to review, refinement, additions, and deletions at each annual town meeting where the plan is authorized. Copies of the proposed plan and budget are available for inspection at the Eastham Town Hall, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and on the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. Jackie?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to ask Rich to just go over briefly some high points, and then we'll move on to question and answer.
Great, yeah, I have some high-level comments, and then Jackie will probably have some follow-up, and I'm happy to talk with the Finance Committee and the Select Board and any other comments. But basically, there are various financial articles in the draft warrant that make up various parts of the town's budget and the overall financing plan of the town. We've used some conservative budgeting practices and followed the guidance of the Select Board and our financial policies in crafting these plans. And I think it's important, one of the key points I wanted to get across is, an important thing to recognize is that we tend to get wrapped up in a lot of the details of specifics, certain revenues funding, certain expenses, for example, is a common one, but with some, maybe very few exceptions. And the truth is that this is all, all of our resources are kind of in one pot, and they're all kind of fungible, and that the use of one revenue for one purpose kind of precludes it for use for another purpose, all of which are important, right? So it's a balancing act. And if that resource isn't pretty used in a particular budget or a particular year operating budget or otherwise, that remains available to the community. And so the community through town meeting gets to appropriate those funds and ultimately use those funds. The funds don't go away, don't get otherwise utilized, and certainly don't go to waste. So regardless of how we think about the revenue or various funding sources, we rely on all of them to finance what we're trying to accomplish currently, while at the same time trying to maintain some perspective and maintain the ability to act on things as they come up to us in the future. So that includes things like our operating budget or our capital budget, funding and implementing the community housing plan, which is on the, up for discussion this year, maintaining a well-crafted capital plan, providing programs to aid residents and local families, and providing the resources necessary to take on community development and infrastructure projects as they come along. So at this point, Jackie and I have gone to various meetings, and the Finance Committee has convened several meetings, pretty much weekly for the last several months, to facilitate a review of departmental budgets and funding sources, and kind of like an overall budget summary, as we had presented with our December proposed budget. And since that time, as each of you know, I've updated the Finance Committee and the Select Board and met with many of you individually to discuss some of the details of that. We've, have made some changes since that time. But at the end of the day, we are here presenting this draft at this budget hearing, and it consists of an annual budget for FY23, which is for our general governmental operations, and that's Article 2A, an annual operating budget for FY23 for our water enterprise fund, which is Article 2B, a five-year capital plan, and an FY23 funding, which is our capital budget for capital, in Articles 3A and 3B, and then supplemental requests that currently fall outside of, you know, either the operating or capital budget processes. And those are all funded from free cash, and those include some smaller items, and then the one big item, the community housing plan, that Jackie will certainly update you on as well. All in all, not only within Article 2A and B and all the other articles, on the whole, the budget proposal and all the financing presented to town meeting is structurally balanced, which means that we're using recurring revenues for recurring expenses, and those items that are suitable for one-time available revenues, we use those one-time revenues for those one-time expenses. If adopted, or, and I should also say, I mean, everything is discretionary, but the one-time expenses tend to be more discretionary than some of the other recurring items. If adopted, this will support our level of services budget, as the Select Board has discussed with us leading up through the budget process, as we currently are providing them, with some additional support to improve some operations where necessary, and a couple of strategic additions to stabilize and support these level services. We'll be able to move forward with many of the elements for our strategic plan and continue to be able to make progress on planning and development of our next steps. And then, as you all know, as we've been discussing, due to salary and expense costs that have exceeded the allowed revenue growth for several years, several of the past years, budget does request of the taxpayers a general override of Proposition 2 and 1/2. This is the first general override in eight years. And if passed, inclusive of the override, we anticipate property taxes for the average single-family homeowner will increase about 1.88%, which would be a $92 increase. And the average, because I, I just went back and looked at some emails, and Mary had asked me, what's the effect on a $600,000 home? The average is 613,000 is what we're estimating it will be for this upcoming fiscal year. So the, that, that 1.88%, $92 is, you know, pretty much equivalent to that $600,000 home. And then finally, you know, I've been talking to the chairs of the Finance Committee and the Select Board, and of course, individually, as questions have arisen. So one of the things that are also in your package is a report of the Select Board that Art has drafted, which at this point is largely focused on Article 2, you know, the budgetary stuff, but we would contemplate that, some other very important articles in town, in the town meeting warrant, which rely on the budget passing or, you know, rely on the budget as proposed. So once that gets sorted and settled, I would anticipate that Art would want to be adding, or the Select Board would want to add, additional language, you know, impacting those other important articles as far as how they impact the strategic plan. And then also, important to the Finance Committee, well, and everybody for that matter, not just the Finance Committee, but tried to summarize, and we did two versions, a summary for our Article 2 operating budget, one which is a little more verbose than the other, has a little bit of detail, and, you know, after some further reflection, thought that maybe something a little more summarized and condensed would be appropriate. And so we presented both. In other case, the more detailed version presents some good information, and then, and then maybe the summary is what we end up going with, but that's for your consideration. And that's my-
I believe Jackie had said it was 20 pages long the first time.
Okay, so I just-
No, I, I agree that there is good information in there, but you start to lose people if things are too long, so if we can, if we can summarize it, we'll, we'll try, I think.
And I think we just need different material for, oh, sorry. Different material for different settings. You know, I mean, we have between now, as, you know, the moderator said, we have six weeks now, that's not a lot of time. By the time the warrant is finalized, it's five weeks, and, you know, we have to get material out to people in a lot of different ways, so.
Thank you. All right, so what, should we move to see if the questions or?
Yeah, questions.
Questions.
Yeah, I just, this is more of a comment, just because this has been kind of a, a hard process. I feel like it's, it's a tricky balance, being in this like post-pandemic economic situation for a municipal government. You have, and this is in the private sector too, I mean, the increase in labor costs, the increase in products and equipment, all these things are increasing at a rate that we haven't seen, I haven't seen in my lifetime. And in addition to that, especially in, in Eastham and the outer Cape, we're seeing this increased need in community services and community programs. You know, housing needs, attainable housing, we're losing some of our population because they can't afford to be here, and these aren't people that qualify for affordable. These are firemen and women and police officers and teachers, and these are, you know, our working population. So, you know, trying to find that balance is so hard, but so important right now. And keeping an eye on this, the, I call it like the disappearing population, we have a young and middle-aged working class on Cape Cod that's, that's just disappearing. And so I think a lot of the members of this board highly value community programs that serve these populations, and to lose those would be to lose these people. We're at such a like critical point in time for the outer Cape, so I think the board really prioritized those, and we really value those. And I appreciate the work that everyone at Town Hall did to help retain that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Second.
All right, so we'll move to the Finance Committee. Questions, comments, discussion?
Oh, I don't know if any member of the Finance Committee wants to speak.
I see a couple hands up there.
Okay. I was expecting this was a public hearing, and we have a meeting on Wednesday where we're going over the warrant, so.
Yeah, so.
I kind of think that's the place for us to ask questions. I certainly, if any member of the public wants to speak, I don't want to lose that opportunity.
Yeah, but I think it is good to get some of your members to ask questions. It'll, it'll trigger maybe something in someone to-
Especially if it's of the Select Board, because they haven't had a chance to ask this.
Okay, so I see two hands up. Mary, let's start with you.
No, you just muted yourself, Mary. You were, you were unmuted, and now you're muted. There you go.
Okay, thanks. Rich, I have a question regarding the reserve fund for the Board of Finance. Originally, you had it for 125, and you moved it up to 200,000. Given the fact that so many things are, are unknown as far as the price of things and inflation, et cetera, et cetera, do you feel that that 200,000 is, is enough?
We're certainly hopeful. As you know, and as we've discussed, and I'm sure we will discuss leading up to town meeting, there's several areas where we have some concern, but our approach was, we weren't sure if these concerns were long-term and justified in an increase in a departmental budget, but we certainly realized that we had some short-term concerns, and that involved, for example, fire department overtime, where we have some staffing challenges and issues. We'll have upwards of six firefighters coming on board that will all need to go to the Fire Academy in the upcoming year, which is a, a record high for us all at once. So, you know, of course, when those people are out, they're not working, which requires us to have some overtime. And so the fire department override, overtime, just for that purpose alone, never mind injured on duty claims, you know, is a challenge. And so in lieu of increasing the fire department budget, hopefully, reserve fund can account for those things if, if we need it to. Second was our snow and ice account, which is chronically, at this point, underfunded, and we are allowed each year to deficit spend that account if we need to, based on the level of storms that occur in a fiscal year, and we have. And so, for example, this year, we anticipate our deficit in snow and ice to be about $45,000, and we'll utilize a, you know, recommend a year-end transfer or a reserve fund transfer to increase that amount. So honestly, we could increase our snow and ice budget, knowing that we have a chronic shortfall on that account, but one of the quirks of state law is, once you raise your snow and ice budget, since they let you deficit spend, they don't let you reduce your budget in a subsequent year. So one way to address that chronic underfunding is by putting more in the reserve fund to cover it, so that we retain that flexibility if we need to reduce it in the future. And then, of course, finally, just the acute inflation that we're seeing right now, there is some concerns, particularly in the areas of gas and diesel for our operations, police and fire obviously run on gas and diesel. We luckily do have a very solid energy contract that's fixed up through this fiscal year, but just the gas and diesel alone are of concern, never mind just traditional departmental expenses.
So you decided that based on all of that, you changed, you moved it up from 125 to 2?
Correct, in lieu of increasing departmental budgets.
Yep, thank you.
Mary, do you have any other questions? Your hand is still up, but probably you just haven't.
No, no, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, great, thank you. George, I see your hand is up.
Yes. The, the summary, the Article 2 summary says that the average property tax increase is going to be $92 in hard dollars and 1.88% for this budget. The first draft of the budget that goes back to December, those numbers were significantly different, and I'm curious as to the, why there's such a difference. That budget said that the average increase was going to be $177 rather than $92, and that the percentage increase was going to be 3.48% as opposed to 1.88% in the current summary. Is that just a mathematical error in the initial budget, or is that budget correct and this one is incorrect? What are the right numbers?
Well, they could both be correct, George, as well. And they're both, and the answer is they're both correct. But what the December proposed budget included, what we didn't, so as you know, you were preparing in the fall, October, November budgets, and we got to pull all that together in December, you know, for the upcoming year, and here we are, you know, three-plus months, four months after that fact, with more knowledge now than we did at that time. And the acute thing, the major thing that you're seeing, George, is the December first original proposed budget include a significantly higher debt service. So one of the things we learned over the last several months is the timing of our water project bond issuance, and we're anticipating that the bonding, bond costs associated with the latest phase of the water project is going to be out at least one, if not two years further than what we originally anticipated and originally thought would be the case. And that has to do with the timelines with the state clean water, Clean Water Trust. So that had a reduction of debt service of over $500,000 for that one item.
And didn't we also have higher estimates for maybe health insurance or school?
Yeah, we made some of those adjustments.
Or some of those, I think, did come down.
Yeah, so, and, not to get down the slippery slope here, but, but we should. You know, so the big reduction is that debt service element, and to the extent, we had various elements, I would say, you know, good budgetary news, and a couple elements of not so good, but, you know, not terribly bad. You know, the good outweighed the bad, so to speak, which did afford us the opportunity to reallocate those savings that we thought we would have to spend, for example, on schools or health insurance, or pension, I think it was pension, and utilize them to address inflation concerns, requests that departments have made that we didn't fund, but really, you know, would have if we wanted to. You know, honestly, I could have, if you recall, the original budget also requested a $500,000 override. You know, we could have requested, you know, a bit higher if we, but, you know, we did try to do some due diligence and did our work internally to present something that we felt was reasonable at the time, but still provided the departments with what they needed. And then, of course, the last three to four months, you know, things have changed to adjust for those things.
George, do you have any other questions?
No, no, that answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Does any other member of the Finance Committee have a question or comment? Okay.
All right, seeing none. All right. Any members of the public? I'm sorry. There are, I see Pat Turillo has her hand up.
Turriello.
Turriello, sorry.
Pat, you're in the audience.
Yeah, go ahead, Pat.
Two quick questions, actually, one question. I noticed in the Article 2 justification was, at least a portion of those funds were for three positions, one a social worker, resource allocation person, being two of them, which is, I think, slotted to help our more vulnerable citizens. I am aware that our, our ambulance squad is going out quite frequently to particularly some of our seniors. So in theory, I think it, it's probably something we should do. One of the things I did not see, what the projection of cost savings would be for these positions. We're saying what the cost will be for salaries, but not a projection of cost savings on overtime. Do you have those numbers? And if not, how would you report that back to the public?
So, Pat, I think the two positions, as, as you know more than- So, Pat, I think the two positions, as, as you know more than probably anyone else here, came from reporting, working on the COA Committee with Police and Fire and putting that together. We actually had statistics that showed that one residence received, we went, we went out 33 times in six months to one resident. So unfortunately, we can't give you actual numbers of overtime costs. And believe you me, the Finance Committee has been asking that same question and Jerry's been trying to wrestle Rich and I to the ground on that one. We can't predict it. We just know intuitively that it should show us some cost because if we're sending out one person with a police cruiser as opposed to three people in an ambulance with a police cruiser, you know, and they're not transporting someone and they're getting that, allowing that ambulance to stay in the community and pick up another resident and take them to the hospital, we won't have backfill costs. So we're going to be putting them, I think, on a day shift where we know there's some increased activity and we're going to watch it like a hawk.
Okay, and Jackie, yes, fortunately or unfortunately, very familiar with, with the issues are. I do think that it is a good strategy, first of all, for those episodic calls, which are happening very frequently. But in addition to that, also a social worker, so we can align services for these individuals because there's always a root cause. And I don't think our process right now is getting to a root cause, which is just perpetuating these episodic calls. You know, I would, you know, wearing both hats, I would like to, you know, get some metrics on how this is actually helping us moving forward. And I appreciate, I appreciate that it's hard to wrap our arms around a number that we really don't know right now.
Well, I can just add to that is that we have started, and we have to fine tune, but it is in place now with the fire department that we do know the number of hours for overtime related to callbacks for overlapping calls, for example. So we're developing that. And if, with this were to be implemented, we definitely could report, you know, the change in callback due to overlapping calls. But the challenge is, is it's not like one element of the data set changes and everything else stays the same. And so, you know, knowing already that we have a tough time with the fire department overtime budget, just because of staffing and training needs, probably doesn't mean that that's going to go down, but it's going to minimize hopefully future increases or minimize any potential deficits that we have. But the bottom line is, I think we will be able to set up a reporting mechanism that we could identify overtime hours saved by this position being in place and eliminating an over, otherwise overlapping call. So those three, 33 calls that Jackie mentioned, we're, you know, typically we're sending out a three person ambulance crew and not doing a transport. And that crew is occupied for up to upwards of an hour, whereas hopefully this person and a social worker would be able to handle those.
Well, in theory, if, if we're aligning a social worker with a individual for services that are needed, it, in theory at least, projection should be that we reduce some of those calls if we're able to get this done. It will take time, clearly, but over a period of a year, we should start seeing some reduction in those calls, hopefully at least.
I agree. And I think the attractive part for me about this combination position, these two positions, one and a half FTEs, is that it will address a service gap that I think we absolutely have and hopefully save us time and money and the expertise of several, you know, EMT paramedics at one call.
One also supports our, just being able to maintain the level of services we have. So we have, you know, we, you know, our staffing of fire department, it does, had changed recently, but, you know, over time, it hasn't changed all that much, but our calls for service has, you know, dramatically increased over the years as well, so.
Okay.
This kind of supports that service.
All right, so then there will be some level of metrics that we will be able to monitor for the success of this over a period of time.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Pat. All right, anyone else from the public that's on Zoom or in the audience? We have one. All right, I don't see any hands up. So I will close the public hearing and we'll move on to the rest of the warrant, or the rest of the agenda, sorry. I know the warrant's further down. All right, licensing. We have renewal of all seasonal, all alcohol, common victular and entertainment licenses. And, well.
The Finance Committee's going to adjourn.
Oh, okay.
Okay, would you make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Finance Committee. I second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
I thought he was saying hi. Hi, Tom.
Aye. Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.
Okay, thank you. All right, licensing. Jamie, you want to attempt a wordy motion?
I will see how I do. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal of seasonal all alcohol, common victular and entertainment licenses for C and C Hospital Hospitality Group, renewal of common victular licenses for Foot Off First Incorporated, Whale Walk In, Eastham Ice Cream Inc. in Gift Barn, renewal of seasonal all alcohol license for Foot Off First, renewal of coin operated amusement license Gift Barn, and renewal of miniature golf license Gift Barn.
Second. All right, any discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Jared?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Three to zero. All right, administrative matters, Cape Cod Municipal Health Group appointments. Lori Barr, the, as the Eastham representative member, and Maya Golding as the alternative member. So I'll make that motion to appoint those town employees.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All right, we'll vote. All in favor, Jared?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Three to zero. All right, remote participation policy.
Revision, yeah. So basically, the governor's executive order, I think it's an executive order, that allows us to do remote meetings without quorums in the room, will end on July 15th unless he does something prior to that time. So we're not really doing anything about our remote participation policy until we know what the governor's going to do, except that I've been at several meetings, I've had to attend some regulatory board meetings lately representing town projects. And one of the things that I've noticed a lot is board members with the camera off. And, and I'm not trying to insult those people and certainly, you know, not to pick on you, Jared, but I think it's when you are going before a regulatory board and you're asking for something and the members have their cameras turned off, it's just, I just don't think that that gives a good sense that someone's actively participating and, and listening to you. And our policy calls for either being available on the phone if you don't have the technology or via Zoom. But I would like us to consider after, you know, the beginning of the fiscal year this year, to make sure that anyone who's attending as a sitting board member on Zoom have their camera and be, you know, attending the meeting virtually in as, as much as they possibly can.
And we also have, you know, if someone doesn't have the capacity at home, the technology or whatever, the town.
We can help.
Owns, I mean, the library owns, you know, many laptop computers, Chromebooks that we could check out. They have hotspots if your internet's spotty. We can address.
Yeah, you can actually borrow hotspots from the library.
Yeah, you can. They're very handy. I do it all the time.
It's, Melanie just told me about that.
Yeah.
Anyway.
You can check them out for a week at a time. And they're, I think Sprint is the service. And yeah, they're great. They're great to take on a trip or take if you're out in the water, myriad of things. All right, so this is, oh, Jared, go ahead. Sure.
Yeah, Jackie, just to answer the, the other side of the coin there, when we were all on Zoom, whether we had cameras or not and audio or not, it was so much more clear. Now, with this quote unquote hybrid model, it's basically like, you guys sound like the peanut characters' parents over there most of the time, and it's very hard to even distinguish one voice from another.
Yeah.
Which is kind of against the way the whole open meeting, executive order written by Baker was put, is that we're supposed to all be able to hear and understand each other. And honestly, it was much better with Zoom and everyone was safer that way. I understand we're coming out of that now and there's going to be growing pains. I just wanted to give my side of that and also the side that as we've seen, public engagement has gone way up since we've had Zoom so that people that might not necessarily have the ability to set a few hours aside to go to a meeting can just pop in while they're taking care of their kids or doing dinner. I'm talking about like members of the public trying to tune in that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I don't think.
I just think that turning that off is wrong. I don't think we should ever turn that off. I don't know if we're going to have the ability to keep it on.
We're not, we're not turning it off. It'll be with us forever and I don't think we want to turn it off. That's why I want to make sure that we though have especially the four regulatory boards, I think the Finance Committee, the CPA Committee, the, you know, the, when we're reviewing projects and we're listening to people and denying or accepting them, I, I really think that it's, it's good that they can see us and hear us. And I watched a meeting the other night and I absolutely agree with you. I thought to myself, we should state our names before we talk because we are like this big on the screen. But I know we have in the budget some new equipment to be able to improve that situation. So as of July, we will be able to have the Zoom capability, not Zoom meeting capability, but the closer camera work.
Right, use the, the regular cameras.
That will allow us to feel more connected to the Zoom world and the in-person world.
Yeah, that's great because my, my big thing is just accessibility. I'm not even talking about myself here, just about the ability of anybody to be able to just attend at the snap of their fingers rather than have to, you know, put hours aside. So that's, that's great news because right now I see four tiny little dots on my screen echoing in a, in a big empty room.
Well, Steve's still here and this lovely patient woman.
Yeah.
Hi, Jared.
Yeah, I know what you mean, Jared. When I, I zoomed from home and saw the board, yeah, they're all teeny little figures. I, I could hear pretty well though, so I, I didn't have that issue on my home computer. I used, usually used a speaker or something though to, to amp it up, maybe that.
Yeah, and it's kind of, it's kind of been different on and off. I, I know that Mike and, Mike and Wayne and crew are doing an excellent job as they have been since the beginning of all this garbage nonsense started. And yeah, it's, it's incredible to see that, you know, again, that we as a town have stepped up and figured this all out with our limited resources. So I'm, you know, grateful for all that and I think that, you know, we're just going to be in transition now.
So Jackie, we, you didn't put our old policy in here. Oh, no, you didn't. The old one. Because it, this one didn't mention anything about the current policy that has the quorum requirements, about the quorum in the room.
We don't have the quorum in the room right now.
Not right now, but I'm saying after, after the act.
Oh, yeah. You're right. I think we just, Lori didn't, wasn't, we took that out of the draft, so we're keeping it out until the governor opines and then we'll have to talk about this again.
Okay, I was just, no, no, I was just making sure that we didn't.
Lori and I just talked about that on Friday.
And how many people we allow, well, if you, if you have a quorum, the rest can be Zoom because now we know how to do it. Before, we had just had the phone in the middle of the room and that was not, that was not fun.
And there's no doubt that Jared's correct. The hybrid, and some towns still aren't doing hybrid, the hybrid is harder than either being in person or being on Zoom. It's just that mix is much more challenging.
Definitely, it's just the technological aspects of it and everything else, but I, you know, I, I look forward to see how we evolve from here and I hope that we keep this line open for people to be able to just pop in if they don't have the time to come down and sit down for a few hours.
Yeah, I went to a, the Cape Selectment and Counselors Association meeting on the 11th, I think it was. And actually now it's named the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association.
Oh, nice.
Because it was getting longer and longer and longer, the name. And finally, they decided to cut out Select Board, Selectment Council, whatever people were named, and just call them municipal leaders. But I spent two hours looking at the ceiling of the Seacrest.
Oh, my God.
Breakfast room. I could hear people, but I was looking at the ceiling, the, just like this, the ceiling overhead. Because they didn't aim any, they had a laptop and they just, every once in a while, someone would come in front of it and see if there were questions and then, then you're looking at the ceiling again behind.
They couldn't just show the room or something?
Yeah, I thought that would have been nice.
Could I just make a quick suggestion?
Sure, sure, Mike, thank you.
Hi, Jared. Mike Cleer, I don't know if you can see me, I'm the bald guy over here. I just wanted to point out that if you go to Speaker View as a participant, you'll just get, you'll just get the town of Eastham without all the other boxes and your picture will be much bigger. That's the only thing we can do right now until we get the cameras in the room connected to Zoom. And we're about a month or two away from there.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I totally get that. And that was, that was nothing against you at all.
No, I appreciate that. It's the best we can do to get this many people in the room, to get this many people in the field of you. You've just got to make your picture bigger and, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Bigger screen and Speaker View.
I'm serious. I, I think I was one of the first or among the first to heap praise on, on you and.
I appreciate it.
For everything you did from the beginning to just this tiny little town, just be able to snap its finger and say, oh, we're online now, whereas last week we were huddled around this sort of UFO speaker telephone.
Remember that? I had nine FinCom members on that.
Oh, right, yeah.
And I had my list and I go down the list because we didn't want people just chiming in and it was.
It's much better now with the names and, yeah. Okay, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Mike. No, no, appreciate all your work.
We've all, we've all learned a lot over the last few years, I think.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, so thank you, Jackie. So we'll look forward to revising that when the time comes, when the governor, governor's order expires. All right, next, Council on Aging, Board of Directors Charge Revision. So I was contacted, I'm the liaison to the COA Board, and they requested a drop from 11 to nine members. They do have someone in the wings that is interested, but I told them to hold off and see what we do with the, with the charge. Unfortunately, this charge is tied to the charter, so we have to wait until the new charter is approved, right? Until we can officially change.
The 2020 charter revision.
But I think we can, we can do it in the, in the short run and let that one, there's currently 10 people on.
Yeah, we're not going to fail.
Let that term run out the end of the year and then we'll have the nine. And hopefully by that time, our charter will be approved and we can, we can move on. So I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at the, the new charge. It's pretty, pretty basic change to drop from 11 members to nine members. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adopt or amend the charge to the Council on Aging to change from 11 voting members down to nine voting members and contingent upon the passage of the, or adoption of the new charter.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, we'll vote. Jared?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Three to zero. All right, next, warrant, or final votes on budget.
Are we ready?
Do we, do we have a period of, do we have a period of public comment on this at all?
Yeah, that's the next one. Review of the warrant articles and, and our message.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. This is just the budget.
But I don't think there's a particular hurry to have it tonight.
Okay, so we'll, we won't vote.
I think we have to, we have to commit to having a short meeting just on the warrant next Monday.
It's a good idea. I like that.
Just the warrant, unless there's an emergency or something.
Yeah, and I really want, you know, the votes in the warrant to be all of us, more of us.
Yes, yeah, I was thinking that.
Just three, it's not going to.
Not going to.
Yeah.
The optics aren't good.
So you're not going to do the warrants tonight?
We're going to go through the warrant, but I, and they'll opine, but I, we don't want to take votes with.
Right.
Yeah. And I like that, that idea of doing.
And we just got, so the draft warrant you have as of Friday, we sent to John Giorgio and we got back. we sent to John Giorgio, and we got back comments this morning. And I went through just a, a quick review. There are not a lot of changes except, um, I'll, I'll point out a couple of articles as we go through if you guys want to.
Okay, um, I'm going to start first. We have someone in the audience. So if there's something in particular you wanted to talk to about the warrant.
There must be.
Rather than wait till near the end, which is I think where you're, where you're wanting to comment.
And I did get.
Appreciate that. So if you could state your name and, uh.
Sure, I'm Lynn Collins Francis. I'm actually, um, representing our family business at Collins Cove cottages, located at 150 State Highway. My grandfather built the seven cottages in 1920s. We're the third generation to run this family business. We have six seasonal cottages, and we have one year-round rental. Jared is the fourth generation. So, uh, anyway. On review of Article 12, um, on the draft warrant, it's proposed, um, that, uh, the town implement a community impact fee of 3% tax to short-term rentals. And so I have read it, and it appears that our cottage colony does not fit the described professionally managed multiple units. And I was just wondering if you can confirm that? If you could just pull up Article 12 and look at it for me, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, you definitely would fit that criteria.
We would.
Yes.
Because it's, um, we're not professionally managed. We've been in existence for 100 years, and it is.
Renting short-term, right? All the units except one.
Seasonally, yeah. So we would because I.
Seasonally.
It's just for 10, you know, like the 10 weeks or something like that.
But not, not, if you did under, if you did over 30 days, then you wouldn't, you would be exempt.
Over 30 days, we wouldn't have to, yeah. We already, our short-term rentals already pay 6% tax to the town anyway, as well as, um, the 5.7% tax to the state and 2.75% to the.
Water.
Water protection. It just seemed like this, on this Article 12, it seemed it was more targeting, um, corporations that are, have come into town to buy multiple units to, to rent for short-term rental. And I actually discussed this with Jared as well to try to understand what the Article 12 was. And it seems that, um, we're one of the few cottage colonies left on the Cape. We're actually part of the historic register, um, as being a, you know, a standing cottage colony. And there are very few in Eastham left. Most of them gone condo. And those, you know, it just seems like, um, I wanted to confirm that we do, we will have to pay the 3%.
Yes, I'm afraid so.
Okay, okay, just in, in reading the Article 12, it just didn't seem like we really fit that criteria because we're a family-run business, we're not a corporation or anything. Who wrote the article? Is that something that you guys wrote?
No, it's, it, well, we wrote the article, but it's based on a state, the state law.
The general law, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, so that means that, it just seems that it's targeting 75 businesses in, in town to bring in money for affordable housing? Is that what it was for? And the, the 6% that we're already paying to the town, it doesn't go for affordable housing? Like the short-term rentals?
It's not a 6%, is it?
Yeah, we're a 6.
No. Yeah.
Uh, the short-term rentals actually has gone this upcoming year to the housing. It's part of the funding of the community housing plan. All the short-term rentals from the prior year were not part of the budget process, which generated surplus receipts and what's called free cash. And it's the free cash, that same free cash is going to support the Article 4, $900,000 to fund the community housing plan.
But it's not always committed to that.
Right.
Okay. This has to be tied to.
This has to be tied. This will be committed to, yeah.
And so when it, when it's on the warrant and people then vote on it, you'll have most of the town saying, yes, this is a great idea because they're not having to pay the 3%, but our short-term renters will have to.
It usually passes down to the renter.
Yeah, it does. But I, I mean, I understand your question. It doesn't involve a lot of people, so would people be more likely to vote yes for it? I don't know. I mean, maybe.
Because I mean, you might, you might have like the 75 businesses say no, but.
Exactly.
It just seems like you're really tar- if, if we're in fact in this bucket, even though we've been in existence for 100 years, and we're not like, we're not the corporations that are like buying up short-term rental units, and we're not keeping housing away from people. It just doesn't seem like we really fit the criteria. So I guess I just wanted to state that. And my dad was Ken Collins. He was actually a selectman for many years. So it's, uh, one of the first times I've been back, uh, so.
Well, I'm sorry it's for this issue, but.
Yes, but, um, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we were represented and understood.
Yeah, and we have, we have, we received a couple of emails against this too because the chairman of the board, who's not here this evening because he and his wife are away, but, um, he very much wanted to get public comment because we really didn't know how popular or unpopular this particular addition would be.
Okay, so now I can send an email just to make sure that he knows?
Yeah, but you can, you, we will just know that you are, I'm assuming, against it.
Yes. Um, and who should I write the email to?
There's a link on the website to all the members of the board.
Okay, great. All right, well, thanks very much for your time.
All right, and, and just, I don't know if you heard our previous, uh, conversation on this. I guess it was just our last meeting. There are 57 proper, people that own two properties. So this is just more than one would be subject to this. So two, own two properties that would, that are subject to short-term rental tax already. Eight that own three properties, nine that own four, and one that has five, which I'm surprised theirs isn't on there with six.
Five. It could be five or more.
Oh, five or more, okay. But there's only one, yeah, so.
We're the only one?
Yes. You're the only one.
Aren't there other cottages in town? Aren't there just like the Cosby cottages?
Most have gone condo, or they're, they may have four. There's nine that have four. So that's, that's a fair amount. And I know a lot have con- condo, and some are year-round.
Yeah.
Because we have one cottage colony that has year-round rentals in all of them, and they actually want to hopefully figure out a way to deed restrict them so they stay affordable.
Yeah, that's eight units.
Oh, that's eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, but those are year-round, so that's where.
Right, and ours are just seasonal. We have to drain the water, and, you know, they're, they're asleep for the winter. So, um, thank you for your time.
But, but thank you, yeah, appreciate it.
Those numbers, Amy, uh, just to be clear, those were from those that have registered on our rental registry. So it might be multiple units, but they're not being rented for, or maybe they are, but haven't registered. This is another issue. And you do have Pat Torriello with a raised, hand raised, if you want to.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, go ahead and bring her in.
Did you want this email?
Yeah.
Can I try to mute it all or what?
Yeah, unmute. Sorry about that. Yes. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm here with my husband, Joe, and we are commenting on the Article 12. We were actually sent an email on Friday regarding this matter, um, wanting public opinion. So I will say that I am not in favor of this. And primarily, and, and we are acutely aware, um, the need for housing for our workers, um, and, you know, people who provide services in the town of Eastham. So we are very attuned to the issues there for a multitude of reasons. However, um, we are already taxing for short-term rentals. And, um, our economy is built on, on those rentals, essentially. And at this point, um, and, and we've fortunately, uh, uh, unfortunately experienced this in our prior state of New Jersey, where shore communities price themselves out of the market, literally. So I do not think that, uh, an additional tax on top of what we are already doing, while it might serve a short-term goal, I am quite concerned as a homeowner that it will cause, or have the potential to cause a long-term problem. We are aware of what the housing shortages are. We have very little land. It is going to be a challenge to meet the objectives, I'm sure. But the continued additions of these taxes, we are not in favor of. Um, that's my voice. Joe, you can say your own right now.
Okay, is it all right if I speak as well?
Certainly.
Okay. My, my concern was, um, it was defined that the 3% would go to affordable housing and/or infrastructure. And, and as we know, in today's climate, infrastructure is a very broad term. So I, I think if this were to go through, I'd like to see it more narrowly defined as to where the money is going to go, rather than just kind of a carte blanche, affordable housing and quote-unquote "infrastructure."
Amy, can I just clarify that, um, Joe? The state law is that a minimum of 35% needs to go to how, affordable housing or infrastructure. And that's the state law. So it's not something we, uh, have created to, for those purposes. That's what it's provided for. But in our case, um, uh, we are anticipating putting 100% of the proceeds from this tax into a separate fund. So it's separate and distinct from the general fund of the town and the operating budget. And any appropriation from that fund needs to be voted and authorized by town meeting. So, you know, if you, you know, if that was a concern, and, uh, the majority of town meeting agreed with you, you could limit any appropriations to be for housing or the other, or for infrastructure. You know, whatever discretion the town meeting chooses to have.
Yeah, I think one thing, you know, infrastructure can be a broad term, but I think when you apply it to affordable housing, it could be used to tie water into affordable housing units or tie, you know, other infrastructure as far as roads or, or things like that, that the town can contribute to help, you know, these affordable housing areas to, uh, to succeed. But.
It was defined fairly broadly. That's why I was just looking to see additional scope as to what needs spoken about there.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
So, so based on our, based on the, um, units that you have to find, and there are about 75 of them, what is the projected income if you are going to use, um, previous years?
About, about $54,000 annually, annually.
So it's not, it's not a lot of money?
No.
No. It is to someone who needs it, though.
I, I, well, affordable housing is going to cost us a lot more than $54,000 a year. Okay, well, you, you request, you know, you did request to get a, uh, you know, some input. Our input would be a hard no on this subject. I, and yet we are very much in support of the fact that we need more housing, but not on this. I, I would be very concerned that at some point, we will just price ourselves right out of the market, and that would be a bigger risk to the town and the economy.
Well, I, I have to say, Pat, you know, I, we heard the same exact argument when we implemented the short-term rental tax, and that was a lot more money than this. It was, what, 14 and a half percent we're up to?
I.
And if anything, the rental, hold on, let me finish. If anything, the rental market has gone through the roof here. I think there are zero vacancies, uh, for short-term rentals the last several summers. And so I, I don't think that that, you know, people expect to pay taxes. When I, when I travel, I don't, you know, I look at the price, and then I look at how much they tax, and then I sort of adjust, um, you know, to find something. But I don't think it's stopping people from coming here. And I don't think an extra 3% on such a small portion of our stock is going to stop anyone from coming here.
Well, and, and you could be right, right. And, and absolutely, you could be right. And, um, and that may be the case. It's a desirable area. I, I, I will just tell you that there are a number of shore communities that say the same thing for Jersey, and, and they just price themselves out of the market. In a few years, nobody wants.
Yeah.
So I have a different experience, and obviously, all, you know, we, we all work from our experience level.
No, I hear you.
It is expensive to rent here. It is expensive to do anything on Cape Cod. And there is always a breaking point, and sometimes it's a small amount that says, no, I'm just not doing it. So I think we need to look at what this is a long-term problem. It is not a short-term one. It's not one that just appeared in front of us. Affordable housing has been a problem for some time, and it's a difficult one to fix. Not easy either. So, um, we would not support that. And, you know, others do, that would be fine. We're just giving you the input that you requested.
All right, thank you. And if you could, just send an email to, you know, put your thoughts down on paper, and then we have that also on record.
Abs- absolutely. We can do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Pat.
Amy, may I just, I, make one comment, please? And this is why I made my comment earlier at the budget hearing about, uh, funds being fungible. And this is just another example of that, right? So Pat's point is very well taken, and, you know, people will agree or disagree with her perspective, right? But the bottom line is if, for sake of argument, if we all agree that we need the $54,000 to spend, if you're not going to get it from the community impact fee, where would you like to get it from? And if the answer is the property tax rate, would you be willing to vote an increase in property taxes for that $54,000? Or do you think there's other money? You know, and so what's the source of funding? And that, and that was my overall point of, all of this is fungible. And the way we structure our budget and utilize our revenues generates free cash to allow us to do these things selectively or strategically. And if you don't do that, then we don't have that ability. And then it goes, definitely goes on the tax rate, so.
And the only other thing I think about is when I first came to Eastham, we were arguing every year about the meals tax. And we had a, you know, we had a selectman who really believed that if we implemented the meal tax, people would not eat at our restaurants. And it got to the point where 10 years down the road, we were the only town on the Cape that didn't have the meals tax. And so you guys voted to enact it, and we enacted it. But we left a million dollars on the table in that, in that 10-year period. And I, you know, we were just, we were doing water at the time. And I'm thinking, if we had a million dollars to put into infrastructure at that point? So these taxes are given, I know it feels like we've had a lot lately, but the state does not give us these opportunities every day, you know? And, and this short-term rental tax really has been a big bonus for communities to be able to sort of catch up and, and pay for some things that we haven't been able to afford before. So if, if we're really serious about housing, I mean, I understand, it's like one tax after another. But, um, but I do think people will pay it, and I don't think the homeowners will pay it.
Jamie, um, let me, let me get to Jared real quick. Yes, Jared, go ahead.
So I realize this is a, uh, I don't know, sticky conflict potentially area.
We're not voting on anything tonight, so.
Yeah, yeah, no. So I'm, I'm just going to, uh, speak slowly and carefully here. Part of it that, um, the, the lovely woman from, uh, the audience brought up was, um, according, if you read the article as it is in the draft, there are fundamental discrepancies, discordance between the article and the summary. And, uh, the, the main point being professionally managed unit, which term is defined, and I don't know if this is a typo or what, professionally managed unit, which term is defined as a one of two or more short-term rental units located, and this is the key, within a two-family or three-family dwelling that includes the operator's primary residence. Like that, that is, is very specific. And I don't know if that's text that we got from, uh, the state or whatever. But, and that just does not jive with what our summary says. So I'm, I'm just curious as to.
We do, Jared, we do have to change this article as it is. What John Giorgio has, our town council has explained to me that it is two separate articles that we tried to mash in as one. In other words, there are two pieces to the community impact fee. We can just do professionally managed, you know, two or more, or we can do anyone who rents more than one unit, and that includes within your house or within a duplex or attached to your house or, you know. So they're, they're two separate pieces. So Province Town is doing the first, but not the second. Wellfleet is doing both.
So, so the text in the article as it stands right now is not accurate or final to what.
No, but that's, the notion of professionally managed, that's defined in the law, and we have to use that specific term.
I, I hear that. But if that's the case, that means that separate dwellings would not be included in that because it says, "short-term rental units located within a two-family or three-family dwelling that includes the operator's primary residence."
Yeah, you'd be, your, your cottage colony would be included under professionally managed.
There's no operator living there.
No, that's, that's what she was saying. That's a sep- would have to be a separate article. This would have to actually be broken up into two different articles.
Yeah, so number one, I think we gotta, we gotta clean that up. And number two, I just want to say that personally, as probably everyone in that room knows, I, I'm the one that pushed to get this here, and I completely agree with it regardless of. of my, my future abilities to do anything with the property. But, you know, I, I completely agree, you need to tax the people that can afford it. And I, I personally, and most of my generation, especially around here, can't afford to spend a couple grand to go on a vacation for a week and not work somewhere. But for the people that can do that, an extra fifty or a hundred bucks is absolutely nothing. They're not even going to blink an eye at. And, you know, the, the main issue is that we need to be able to have a workforce here, because, you know, speaking of break-even points or, you know, pricing out of the market at a certain point, if we don't support enough workforce housing, and for the people that live here, there's going to be no one left to provide the services that the people coming here want to enjoy. And we, and we've seen that just through the last two years, where businesses have to close earlier, take a few days off or whatever, and at, at the same time, having perhaps more people during shark year and then pandemic year, and then pandemic year two, every year, there's
More, more.
More people here. It's a mother banner here, but it's hitting the point where the, that we can't provide any more economic benefit out of it, because there's not enough people living here to work here to keep those businesses open to provide that stimulus. So it's, I, I'm just saying, I recognize it's a very difficult situation, and, you know, it, it's sort of crept up on all of us, and we're trying to fix it now and throw anything we got at it.
Yeah.
And I, I just see that we can clean this up a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate, yeah, appreciate your comments, and I think you're, you're right about people coming here. This, this is a drop in the bucket. Well, for one, it's only fifty-some properties that are now registered that would be affected. And, you know, people coming, i- if, like Pat Tirriello had mentioned, i- if they start to get priced out, well, that's on the person renting out the place. Maybe they're charging too high a rent. It, it's that, the tax on top of it is not going to break, to break, yeah, break that.
Yeah, and it's, and it's a really difficult problem, too, because I, you know, to, to speak a bit to, to Lynn Collins Francis's position there, you know, where we say, you know, we're a, a particular, different kind of set that, you know, people come for generations, and we don't make a profit, we just make ends meet and keep the, the roofs over the heads, and blah, blah, blah. And, and I agree with all that, and I think that's nice, but, you know, there also might be, and I don't know, this may be, if there's only fifty properties we can find out, my thinking via reading this was like, okay, so what if, you know, eighty-five-year-old woman lives alone in a house and rents out two houses, and she, or rents out two cottages on the property in the summer seasonally, and like, that's how she's able to survive and has no family around? I'm thinking, I'm, I always think worst case and best case when I look at tools like this. And I just want to make sure that we're not hurting anyone that we're, we're actually trying to help, you know?
Exactly.
And then it's, and it's complicated. I don't have the answers, and I don't, I don't think anyone does yet, but I think we all got to keep working on it, and I, I think this is a step in the right direction, but I'd like to see it cleaned, cleaned up a little bit, which you've, which you guys have hinted at, you, you're already doing so.
So that's a, so, is, I don't know at this point where the board's going, but I think we need to be clear about the part A, the part B. Do we want just professionally managed more than one unit, or do we want the more than one unit, including duplexes and cottages?
I think if it's seasonal, I think we need to do all of it.
Because, you know, that woman could rent her house year-round, that's, or her cottage.
Right, motivation, right.
And we actually might, under the ADU bylaw, may be able to help people winterize or
Get to that. And then change it to a year-round, yeah.
Yeah, that was the other thing, too, and I was looking forward to all the zoning task force-related articles we have going here. And it, it looks to me, and I, perhaps I'm optimistic, that a lot of these problems are going to be solved by the forward-thinking of the, you know, people behind the wheel that we've said, hey, here's the problem, figure it out, and, you know, they really, really have, and I'm, I'm hoping it all pans out.
Yeah, I think between Lauren and Paul, they have some really fabulous, even that, you know, improve, business improvement program.
Yes, I'm very excited about that.
Yeah, very excited, so. So Jamie, you had something?
Um, I think I'm okay. I think the point kind of, it's coming on.
Okay, because we have, we have a couple emails. How about we just put them in the packet?
For next, for next time?
For next time, because we're going to be talking about the two separate articles.
Yeah, and in the meantime, Rich and I will change the wording of that article or split it into two.
Yeah.
Thanks, Lauren.
Maybe we could do A and B.
Twelve A and B?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, that way they're connected.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want it to be separate articles, you want it to be like connected, but
So people know it's connected, right?
Yeah.
I like that.
Okay.
All right, and I think we're done with, oh, no, we wanted to go through the warrant. Now we have nobody here anymore.
Yeah, well, it's nine attendees.
We're not going to be voting tonight, so how do we, should I just go through the list?
Yeah, go through the list and just see if there are any questions. And, and I'm going to go through, as you go through, I'll look and see whether John had any comments that are, most of them are just wording or language changes.
Okay, we've already, let's see, revolving accounts, anyone on that? We've gone through the budget.
Capital.
Questions already, capital appropriations. This rental revolving fund.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one to talk about for a minute.
Is that five? Yes.
So that already exists as a function of law, where we can take the proceeds from rentals, like Town Center Plaza,
Which we now have.
And put them in a se- separate fund to be used for the costs associated with maintaining the facility. And so that's what's happening, the law allows us to do that. But what the law doesn't allow us to do is to carry over any unspent balance from one year to next within the fund. What it requires is at the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, that any unspent balance gets turned over to the general fund, which, you know, is fine, too, but I think our intent, but then we need, might need money for a repair that comes up in Ju- in July. So the, the do, the law allows us to have the fund, and then has a proviso that if you, town meeting accepts that proviso, that the fund just isn't continuous revolving fund. And so that's what Article Five is about.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on that? All right, let's see, next we have the Beach Plum Motel. I don't think we've even gotten any comments on that, have we? The Beach Plum Motor Lodge? And that doesn't require an override?
No, it's within the levy limit, but it requires the two-thirds majority because we're going to borrow
Borrow money, yeah. Next is fire prevention. Is that the lockbox one? I know I read through these earlier, but I'm losing
Now, John is saying in, in his notes that he's not sure that there's anything in Chapter 148 to indicate that local acceptance is required, and you might be able to do this without town meeting, so I have to follow up on that.
It's basically the ability of levy a fine.
Yeah, right. If they don't put in a lockbox.
But if they accept it, wouldn't it have to be in a bylaw? So it would have to be, unless we make it like a regulate, I don't know, I'll have to ask John. It's confusing.
All right, the drainage easement on Great Pond Drainage Easement. And that is, you've already discussed that with the owners?
Mm-hmm.
And they're
Negotiating.
Any questions on that?
But it'll help the road and the fish patch, pass, passage.
Yeah, I didn't even realize that pond was over there.
I know.
I saw some map that showed herring runs, and I'm like, there's no pond over there, is there?
Yeah, it's really crazy. We have some spots in Eastham that are nicely hidden.
So there's a good layout of that.
So the next two, nine and 10 are, so we took these from Chatham as legislative changes. What John is saying in his notes is, do we want to fold the Affordable Housing Trust into the new housing trust, or do we want to just?
Or vice versa.
Yes, or, you know, find a way to, are we trying to have two trusts?
Yeah, I was worried about that when I read it, and
And I don't think we want two trusts.
The intent was to have one trust named the Community Housing Trust, that's more than just affordable housing. The challenge that I know Chatham is having with getting this through, and I think by the time our legislation, if this were to pass, got there, would be defined, is that the old money is still the old money.
Right.
The old money was appropriated and you, and for the purposes of the Affordable Housing Trust, so we got to indicate that any money that exists is still at the, the old limits. And we're just talking about new money would be at the upper limits, but it would still be one trust.
Okay, can you designate different pots of money?
Yeah, it's just an accounting, it's accounting exercise.
So I'm wondering if maybe when we asked John, the question is, would it be easier to either write something in this article that says this, the Affordable Housing Trust will be folded into this, if that's allowed by law, or vice versa? Can we take some of this language and fold it into the?
So basically ups our limits and
Yeah.
Things like that, as far as
Right, so that was the intent. So, so again, I think his comments are not clear to me.
Okay.
Because I don't think he was sure of our intent.
The other element, I think, just to point it out for the board is, this was an issue in Chatham, and I think Jackie, you brought it up the other day in conversation, is, is two-hundred percent the right amount? This might seem like a lot to people, and maybe, but
CPC is saying maybe.
But it gives you flexibility, right? There's, it doesn't say it has to be up to two, it says that gives you up to two-hundred percent.
And we know how long it takes to do special legislation. So do we want to have to do it again ten years from now?
Well, and a hundred percent is, what, sixty-eight thousand dollars for a family of two?
Yeah, I know.
I mean, so there's no way that that income level can afford
Well, I guess the point is if there's a acute concern for something, you know, we have the ability internally to say, okay, well, we have the ability to go up to two-hundred percent, but we're only going to go to one-fifty or one-seventy, you know, whatever.
Right, and I think, I think people, the, the comments that I'm receiving is, it's too much, like, we're going to move all the money into the higher levels. That's not the intent. We'll always have money for affordable, under sixty percent AMI. And that's not, that's a category that we have experience with, we have funds for, we have rental programs, we have the subsidies. We're just trying to, you know, get into some of the other categories that we know need, need assistance to, you know, that's all. So, so I will ask, I'll follow up on twelve definitions and nine. Is there any way we can just have one trust?
Okay, and then, I guess, is the, or is it ten? What was ten?
Home rule petition for Ten is to raise the income limits.
Oh, okay, they're separate, yeah. For some reason, I, I must have missed the bottom of that one page, so I thought it was all kind of together. And that's, yeah, that's for CPA money, right?
Oh, I'm getting a note from our Lauren Barker, who's, are you there, Lauren? Are you just listening in? Anyway.
Oh, yeah, she is on there.
Her note is, the legislation would also allow the CPA and trust to adopt policies for how to allocate based on AMI or any other criteria they deem appropriate.
Thank you, Lauren. All right, we went over twelve. So thirteen inclusionary zoning.
And those, the public hearings are Wednesday night
Oh, okay.
That the planning were.
And that's how many do we have here?
Four, I think.
Take up a lot of paper.
They do. They're going to take up a little less paper, Paul says.
Amy, did you skip eleven?
Did I skip eleven? Sorry.
Yeah, we did skip eleven. What's eleven?
Oh, right, the community fund.
That's important, yeah.
I'll let you take that, Rich.
Yeah, so this is one I do have to follow up with town council on. What we're hoping, going for here is basically, we have the ability to accept contributions and segregate them within our records and, you know, spend them accordingly. But what we're really looking for here is the ability to also appropriate taxpayer money into the, such a fund. It does have to be for a valid, you know, you do have a state constitution which has an anti-aid amendment that doesn't allow you to, to just do that for private purpose, but the, the tie-in here is that we're doing it for human services-type purposes-type programs. And so we think we, therefore, you know, justified, it's allowable municipal expense, but we want this to be clear that that is such. And so this puts it in a separate fund, and, you know, also is part of the plan of, you know, an overall community services-type approach to human services and the other services we provide, whether through its cultural, recreational, senior services type of thing. The question that we have is, which hopefully we'll, we'll clear up tomorrow, is to what degree do we need to be specific within the legislation as to the governance? So in other words, do we need to say that it's a five-member board or a seven-member or whatever the board is? Do you have to say exactly what those powers are? Or can we reserve a little bit of discretion to the SLUT board and let the legislation be broad that says, you know, the SLUT board can come up with whatever regulations they want, governing the fund type of thing?
And I, and I think I've, we've experienced with the special legislation that we've had in the past few years, that sometimes the specificity bothers them, and sometimes they ask for more specificity. So it's just not clear to me, maybe John has more insight.
To be determined.
Because on the private road utility easements, they wanted more specificity about what utilities we might bring in, that we pro, we would promise not to bring any public utilities in.
All right, so all those zoning, A through I, will be at the public hearing on Wednesday. And we have a lot in red still, so I don't, I doubt anyone has too much to comment on those so far.
No.
And then next is general bylaw conservation, the wetlands, about the pressure-treated wood.
And I think it just gives some the ability to do a waiver. Doesn't actually promise anything.
But allows the process to, yeah.
Yeah, I think the summary was a great addition to that, it really explained what's going on.
Okay. Next is the It's also for the Conservation Commission in the wetlands bylaw. Yeah, so I, I wasn't real clear on what was happening here. A waiver provision. Who wrote this, a lawyer?
No, Karen.
She's, she's upped her game. But, yeah, it's, it's very, I don't know, I think it's written from a, a pretty technical standpoint, and I don't know, what's your, what's your take on it? I guess we can have them come give us a presentation on it.
Yeah.
Which we'll do with CPA anyway, and then maybe get, get some of these
I don't know if we have time, unless you want to do it next Monday.
Well, and not even if it's before we go to print, but as far as
Just understanding it, yeah.
Pre-town meeting, so everyone understands it, a little more in-depth, so we don't have to take up, you know, a half an hour at town meeting explaining it. Because I'd like to hear, you know, the justification for what brought this about, and
Amy, Karen's in the audience with her hand raised if you'd like to
Oh, yay.
Hey, Karen.
Hi.
Hi.
I didn't write it.
Oh.
No wonder, no wonder we don't understand it, okay.
Well, there you go, it's some standard language that Chuck Katuska found for us. You're talking about the waiver.
Yeah, right. So what are you trying to do?
Well, when the Rock Harbor project came through and you guys wanted to use, not the green hard, this is an example.
Yeah.
Green heartwood, you wanted to use something else.
Yeah.
We weren't able to go around our, any of the regulations to allow that, even though we wanted to.
Okay.
So the, and, and there are other options when the regulations are so strict that it would be a taking of the property to actually implement them as is without giving some-
Compensation.
Real room, shall we say. So we, we did put a, we did add to the boilerplate language a requirement that it takes five commissioners to approve a waiver. We don't want it to be a, something easy to get. We want something that is well-presented and that the commission has to think of very carefully. So it's not something that gets done often.
So I understand. So basically, it would be helpful if you find yourself in a situation as a commission that you agree that the applicant is proposing to do something that, that might be more of benefit than harm, but you don't, you can't agree to it at this point with the regulations that you have.
Right.
But if they can make such a compelling case that five members, you know, agree, then you could grant a waiver under certain circumstances.
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, that's very clear.
I read it over several times and I was just as confused by the time I got to the end each time. So thank you, Karen. I appreciate that. Um, all right, let's see, next we have the, oh, this is the alarm system by law. The other one was just the ability to fine. But doesn't this have the fines in it too?
Yeah, this has fines.
Yeah.
So is this requiring a residence also or just a business?
I think it's anybody who has a monitored fire alarm system.
So that if they're away and it goes off-
You don't have to break the door down.
Yeah.
I don't even know if my alarm system is that or not.
Is it monitored?
I don't know.
Does someone come if you don't press the button or call?
I'll have to set it off and see what happens.
Yeah, because usually you get a phone call and then they come.
Yeah, because we had, my father-in-law, we had a, you know-
Because I'm just wondering how many other people are probably like me like.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I don't have like a keypad. Don't they usually have a keypad if it's alerting someone?
Yeah.
Well, normally you'd have an alarm service company, right?
Oh, I see, so like a true alarm system.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
A third-party company would get the alert and then call the local fire department.
Okay, so it's only people with that system?
Yeah, but they, you know, the ones, like, my father-in-law had one that, you know, fallen and you can't get up-
Yeah.
-people. And that, that's a service that calls-
It's monitored, yeah.
It's monitored and they, they try to call, when it goes off, they try to call you to see what's going on.
If no one answers, they send someone.
Before they call the police, if, yeah, if no one answers-
They send-
Okay, so anyone with any type of-
So we got a lockbox-
Yep.
-when we had that put in. They recommended it.
If someone doesn't have a system at this point, can they still get a lockbox under this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we encourage that, really.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Because if someone calls 911 and they can't get to the door to open-
And if you have pets-
It's when they don't have to break the door down.
A lockbox is good. Like, what if you're away and your pet is alone?
Okay, I'll be getting an alarm system, or just one.
You take your dog with you wherever you go.
I know, you do.
She's right here. All right, the next are the CPA articles. Are they, where's, what's their, uh, I guess they've done all their voting, yeah.
I think they have one more meeting in April.
Okay, and-
Uh, the CPC and the Finance Committee have both vote, taken their votes on these. One thing that has come up that Peter Wade brought to my attention is that there's typically a preference to utilize the reserve balances first as opposed to undesignated fund balance. So we'll talk that out at the next CPC meeting and perhaps the cure to that. And so nobody has to go back and re-voting anything is just maybe, so if you have an understanding that the motion that's made might be slightly different than what is presented in the form.
And again, if we could have them for the, for the pre-town meeting to, you know-
Go through them all, yeah.
Go through them, yeah. All right, and then I guess is the next, the petitioned articles. We've kind of went over those last time.
Yeah. And I know Karen's probably here for that one.
Conservation Fund one. True, we didn't, uh, we didn't really, we talked about that a little bit.
Yeah, it would be good to get more input on that, because I was not feeling it. Way understood it.
Are we talking about the dredge article or?
No, the, uh, establish the Conservation Fund. Because we did talk about the dredge article a little bit and we were going to meet, have a work session on April 11th to discuss, you know, sort of talking points that we were going to use at town meeting about the dredge.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, well, I don't, I don't need to beat a dead horse. I'm, I'm still confused about, I guess, why it's there and also why we would oppose it because it seems to me just to be the logical thing we've already agreed to anyway. But I'll, I'll, it's not a hill I'm going to die on, so.
What do you mean, why it's there? It's a petitioned article. We don't really have a choice.
Yeah.
It was-
No, 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 I'm sorry. I, I don't mean that. I mean, why it was, why it was brought forward at all because it, it basically says what our agreement is already, that we're not going to get in the way of them on their own, you know, on their own land and leans to the South.
Right.
But we have input on our lands. And that's, that's kind of already what the agreement is because that's how-
Right. I mean, on one hand, it says we're not, we, they don't want us to stand in the way, but then you're entitled to your opinion later, which is one way to stand in the way.
Potentially, could potentially, yes, yeah.
So it's, it's a little contradictory.
The summary for that one was just received today, so it's not in your packet, but I have it in the, in the-
Oh, okay.
So depending on what it says, I'll, we'll do a town summary. You know how I do petitioner's summary and town summary?
Great.
So, sorry, sorry, Lori, if that was you, I, we couldn't hear you on this side.
Oh.
Oh, she stated that she did get a summary for the dredge article today and that we'd get that subsequently. And then Jackie mentioned that on petitioner's articles, we usually have sort of the town's summary of what, how we feel about it also.
Yep, okay, great. Yeah, glad to hear it. That would, that would definitely be helpful from the petitioner as well.
Yeah. Um, all right, so the Conservation Fund, we want to bring Karen back in to talk about that. I see her hand up.
Hi again. I had sent Lori and Jackie a summary and some letters supporting this that I had thought would be in your packet.
They were.
Okay, and having read that, do you have questions I could answer or? Because I think the summary, the summary with the petition and the summary that you guys have with the letters of support from Mass Audubon, from the Eastham Conservation Fund, the Climate Action Committee, the 651 Forest Committee, and the UU Church.
Yeah, that wasn't our packet. I didn't see that.
Yeah, it's- Yeah, supplemental-
Materials.
-warrant.
I see, I see, I see.
We can't put the packet in the warrant, so it's, it's, it's in there. It's just in a separate location.
And, and the summary in the warrant has a shorter version of pretty much the same.
Yeah, I think, you know, the Jackie's sort of take on it really sums it up in that most, almost everything in that article about the Conservation Fund and what it can be used for are things that can be planned, except for the purchase, the land acquisition portion. And I think that's the one thing that we all, we, when we discussed this last time that we all had a problem with was authorizing that land acquisition when it hasn't been a problem to wait until town meeting for that for, you know, for the citizens to wait.
That's looking at real estate from two years ago and before that. And the real estate market has changed drastically in the last two years. The number of, the amount of time that a property spends on the market on average is 22 days.
Yeah, but not, not vacant land so much. It's, it's, that's-
Vacant land as well. There's been some vacant land that, that we would have liked to maybe have done something with. But by the time we find out it's for sale and the limited amount of time that it's on the market makes things very difficult.
Oh, yeah, and that's, that's all cash deals too at this point. If I can chip in with my feeling about this, so I-
Conservation land, you have all kinds of tax incentives to sell to a town or a Conservation Trust or, we've just never had a problem with it. I mean, we had to raise money to buy the turtle land and those people wanted to sell it to conservation. And they just wanted a certain price for it. And we got, we agreed on the price and they agreed to wait until after town meeting. And, and we've done it twice this year in this market. So I understand what you're saying, but I think there is a mechanism and it's an executive session with the Select Board as soon as you hear about something because we're very quick at making decisions and making offers. And we're, you know, we've been fairly successful with it. But the Turtle Project was extensive. I mean, I know the-
I worked on that with Audubon.
Right, and Audubon raised money and the Foundation raised money and the town raised money. I mean, I think it was a great partnership for that one.
Yeah, but that's with somebody who, who wants to sell to the town. And, and there are, there are important priority pieces of, of property that somebody might not want to sell to the town.
Okay, but then you're going to be in a bidding war with private property owners? I mean, I don't know how that's going to go either, Karen. I, I-
I don't know how that's going to go. It, it, the property, the property market is, is very strange, I think, at the moment. So, yeah.
I think it's, everything in the fund is perfect except for the fact that you can circumvent the Select Board and town meeting and have the Conservation Commission purchasing land with taxpayer money. I think that's the piece. If you, if you were going to do this fund and not have town money in it, that's one thing. But if you're going to do the fund and have town money in it, then I think town meeting should have a say.
Well, i- in this case, town meeting has a say in allocating funds that we, we wouldn't get town money, that we would be able to spend without going to town meeting.
True, but it would be, wouldn't be designated for a specific-
It, it wouldn't be designated for a specific property. We, we certainly have criteria that we could make public on how we've identified properties. We have a priority land list that we've identified important parcels, which we can't share because that would make, for a bad negotiating position.
Karen, is there a possibility that the Select Board and the Cons Commer Open Space Committee and the Housing Trusts could meet and make a commitment to do these things over the course of the next year? Or, I mean, we could even have a special town meeting if we needed to. But I think that the, the three groups really need to sit down and look at your priority list. And everybody needs to come up with a conservation management plan that's as, as good as our wastewater plan's going to be, as good as the housing plan is. I mean, it really didn't take us very long to put together the housing plan once we met with the trust and got all the pieces on the table. So I think that's, that's the piece. It's got to fit into the rest, you know, and-
Processed us to get there.
We've been wanting to meet with the, the Housing Trust on this for a very long time.
I know, and we just met, I mean, Shayna and I just met with the Open Space Committee last month and, and agreed to set it up. It's just, it's on this timeline. It's, it's, I don't know, it's short for us.
If, if I, if I may, can I try to help us get out of the weeds here? So the way I see it, okay, establish a fund. You're, you're asking open bank, okay? And at the very end of the summer, funding will be requested at future town meetings, okay? So that tells me we're not, we're not giving, we're not giving one committee in town a blank check. We're saying, we're, we're making it possible to have this fund open and then allow at future town meetings to vote on funding for things that the Conservation Commission wants. And I don't see anything wrong with that. And maybe I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding or missing something.
Well, I think-
To me, this is controversial loss.
Also, the CPA committee did not want to vote in, did not want to vote any funds towards this without having town meeting weigh in on the whole concept.
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, I want, I want town meeting to decide everything personally. So I, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with this at all. And that's, I'm really, I just ask me- Yeah, what am I, what am I missing? Give it to me.
Okay, if they were, if the frankness was there, if someone was standing up and saying, "We want to open this fund so that we can ask for money from people and from the town and the CPA next year because the CPA said if we opened a fund, they would give us money and then we will buy land with that money without town meeting approval." You know, there's nothing wrong with this fund. The fund is perfect. It's the mechanism by which we're trying to circumvent our normal process to purchase land on behalf of the town that, that-
Yeah.
Nobody else can do. And-
I, I understand. It looks to me like this is the Conservation Commission trying to put something in because they have felt that their hands have been tied and this is their last effort to say, hello, yes, we're trying to ask them to collaborate. That's the way I'm taking it. I, I did not coach with, with Karen on this.
Yeah, I think it's more preemptive, Jared, than, than that they have, you know, no options. I, I think it's more, like Karen said, the market has been crazy lately and, you know, would this help or not? I don't even know if they could still compete.
Yeah, it's still, that's still an open question. And certainly, it's, our intentions to come through the town meeting and the CPA process whenever possible. Because it, this would be a fund set up to grow for, for times when that's not possible. And in fact, the, the petition article itself says very clearly that the Conservation Commission could use this without further town approval. So nobody's hiding that.
Right.
And, and certainly, when I get up to talk about it at town meeting, I will mention that.
Okay. Amy, may I?
Yeah, to, to me, if I may, this, this sounds like the beginning of a conversation where we're, we're all laying it out on the table. And I, I really value that and I think that we should work together on it. And I'm, I'm seeing, I'm seeing both sides here.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm seeing perhaps frustration with one side or the other. This, you know, if this brings it out in the open and we can talk about it more and figure out what's due to make everybody happy, then I'm, I'm all for it.
Yeah, it's, it's some, also some way of getting a conversation started about how we can fund open space and have funds ready and how we can, there's such a, a small amount left that's undeveloped. But how, how do you protect that? How do you fund, protect that? How do you move quickly when things come up? Certainly with chap, chapter 61 properties, the town only has 120 days to make a decision on it. You know, I guess that's enough time to have a, a special town meeting.
Yes, right.
Perhaps some of the other properties, not so much.
Yeah, and maybe I'm going out on a tangent here. No, I am going out on a tangent here. Does the mechanism already exist for like a, a landowner in town to say, "I'm going to donate this strip of my land that I don't use to conservation" and take off next roll? Okay, so, yeah, I, I think that's something that should be advertised more too. Because, you know, I, I will, my name, I'll, I'll name myself as one and go ahead and throw myself under the bus there. I got a chunk of my property that I have no interest in, in using for anything. And if it could be conservation or tied into any sort of Eastham towns, solar projects, like, you know, we, we've, we've got to be quick on our feet here because the, the, the tide is against us. So any way that we can find to work together to figure this stuff out is, is good.
Yeah, there was a, a big push several years ago from the Eastham Conservation Foundation. And actually, we did exactly that, Jared, on, on the property we own. Put over two acres in conservation.
Into a conservation restriction.
Into a conservation restriction, exactly.
Yeah, we've been talking about-
It's in perpetuity, so it could never be developed.
Yeah, so we've been talking about all of those methods and how to reach out to the public on this without seeming like we're pressuring them to do, to do something.
We went to a presentation, I think it was at the seashore, maybe, I don't know. We went to a presentation, I think it was at the Seashore, maybe, I don't know, eight years ago now or so, but Rich has been jumping at the bit here, too.
I think, Karen, we've been talking about the funding that you might request in the future. I guess my question or issue with this would be, as I understand it, I guess the funding could be specific to a specific purchase, which it could be otherwise without the fund, but the funding you're contemplating is not specific to a parcel. It's just a have on hand in case something came up, and I guess that's the nature of the issue I have, you know, and Jackie and I talk about, is, you know, is that put this seven-person committee at odds with what, housing or some other community need or municipal need, and that these seven people on the committee are making that decision, legally have the ability to make that decision without going through a process, and not to say that you would, but that exists.
Right.
It looks to me like we've opened up the acknowledgement of the necessity of talking about this more and working more closely together. That's the way I'm reading it. I'm reading this positively. That just means we need to do better.
Yeah.
In that respect, Jared, I guess that means, from my place on the board, I think that means that the article isn't there yet, for me.
Yeah, well, 12 isn't either. We have stuff to clean up here. Progress anywhere is always good.
Well, that, we can't change this article. It's a petitioned article, so we can't, we can't change it.
Okay.
On the warrant.
And I did have one other point of clarification, just to make sure everybody understands that our CPC, each year when they vote their allocation for the upcoming revenues, they allocate 10% to each of the restricted purposes, and the remaining 60% goes to a budgeted reserve, and the CPC is able to utilize that budgeted reserve for any valid purposes that come up during the year without having to go back to town meeting. So there is a mechanism available to us.
Wow, I didn't know that. They've never used it, but they have it. Interesting.
It didn't seem like that was something that they mentioned when we were discussing this, that it was possible for them to use that without going back to town meeting. And one of the funding sources we were thinking for this was that 10% mandatory allocation to open space.
Yeah.
And that's the other discussion we ought to have with the CPC, you know, to Peter Wade's point of typically using the reserves first, you know, maybe it's intentional that they don't use their reserves first for open space, and they will have, you know, an available balance in addition to the budgeted reserve.
Right. All right, so I think we're going to move on here. Next, oh, sorry, Karen, you had one more thing?
Yeah, clearly, we're going to have more discussions about this after town meeting as well, and how we might best facilitate all of these things, or how we might approach the purchase of open space in a different manner.
Gotcha.
Thank you for the discussion.
Sure, thanks, Karen. All right, next minutes, February 28th, 2022. I'll make a motion to approve. Yeah, the minutes of 2nd, February 28th. Now, was that the one I had the, no, it was the next one. Okay, so any discussion? All right, we'll vote. Jared?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And myself, aye, three to zero. And then the March 7th, 2022, I just had one little thing I told Lori about under, I guess it's on the second page, about halfway down, when Mr. Burns was talking about the different properties, the Millikan grant, and it abuts the Millikan property, is what Mr. Burns thought, but it does not abut the Millikan property, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then you could take out Jared's comment, really, because that was just about his property. All right, so I'll make a motion. Do we make the motion?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 7th.
With changes.
With changes, yeah. All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Jared?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And myself, aye, three to zero. All right, your show.
Okay, I don't have too much. Pre-town meeting Thursday, April 21 at 6:00 PM. The moderator, that is school vacation week.
Oh.
So we may want to adjust that date, and I don't know. I think when Lori and I talked about it and we set the date, it was because it's two weeks. We always like to have two weeks between the pre-town meeting and town meeting.
Maybe if it's a little closer, that's not such a bad thing.
Yeah, so we might need to look at that next week.
Yeah, I actually will be just arriving back in town after driving from DC that day, so.
So you wouldn't mind.
I might be a little late myself.
All right, so Lori, let's talk about the pre-town meeting date tomorrow and do some emailing. So Planning Board review of the zoning bylaws is Wednesday night at their meeting, which is, I think, starting at four, four or five, 4:00 PM.
What, sorry, what day?
The 23rd at 4:00 PM.
Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday. And I just wanted to let people know they're going to start seeing some cutting, or they've begun cutting 4715 State Highway next to Coastal Properties, Cedar Bank Landing. They are clearing that to put their prefab units as they're waiting to be moved to the site, and they've gotten special permission or a waiver from the Planning Board for April 1st to August 31st to do that, and then they will have to reseed, re-tree, re-landscape part of that lot.
Okay.
And the Conservation Commission did vote to approve the amended order of conditions for the BMADA aquaculture grant holders to drive on the beach between May and October. It was a grueling and painful process that began in July and ended just last week, but the amended order of conditions is extensive and will probably, I'll bring it before you in April, and we can talk about the licensing regulations to get those guys up and running before.
May.
May.
Okay, great.
And the Center for Coastal Studies is ready to present their findings.
June, in June?
Yeah, June 22nd.
Awesome.
We'll try to get a preview for the board at some point, because it makes me a little nervous that...
All right, new and upcoming agenda items, and follow-up?
So next Monday, we'll do the warrant articles with special focus on the ones that we're changing. We'll try and get that out, you know, as soon as we, a new packet out, as soon as we've got them. We'll add all the comments on the community impact view if we get them.
Okay.
And clarify that language as well.
All right, great.
It's going to be voting the budget and the warrant.
Yep.
Yep.
And... We're going to try and keep it limited to that unless we have to discuss something else.
Well, Art wanted me to bring up about the contract for the agreement with the Seashore on parking.
We have to put that on next week, too.
So we, as he mentioned last time, we, you know, met with the Seashore Superintendent a couple of weeks ago now to talk about parking arrangements and construction down there, which we updated on that. But these parking agreements, it's a five-year deal, and we've been, Art and I have been kind of working on changes we'd like to see before we bring it to the whole board, so we have a draft. I think he did send that to you.
Mm-hmm.
And so one thing that we're kind of changing in it is to codify the exact number of spots and where they are, and attach the diagrams to show exactly where the spots are in the document, so that, you know, Art's a little worried that things could change without us having much say, but I think if we insist that things are in there, the exact numbers, that will...
Solidify that.
That will solidify it, and also, you know, he's determined to get some language in there to say that, you know, we'll continue to explore options for dropping off, whether or not we can agree on stuff or not, but it says, in the old contract says, "will not be considered."
Totally.
So we're going to try and put some language back in there, and I believe there's going to be a site visit to sort of look at, you know, the areas and see if something can't happen in just the Eastham portion for drop-offs, but there's a lot, you know, there's a lot to consider. You don't want people dropping kids off and leaving and things like that. Yeah, so, so it has to be a monitored program, unlike what we had before at Ghost Guard where it was just, you know, cars slowing down and people jumping out.
Children's day.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and I guess that's about it, right? Anything I'm missing? No?
No.
Okay, so we'll have that in the packet, the draft.
Okay.
Seashore agreement. All right, anyone have anything else? Jared?
Happy second day of spring, and for myself, that means that we survived what could have been potentially nasty winter in the cove, and it means a lot of growers were probably also saved from a lot of trauma, too. Yes, we had some big storms and some wind, but anytime I think about that, I think about back to the winter of, I believe it was 2018 and 2019, when we had storm after storm after storm.
Yeah, we had like four nor'easters in March, and March isn't over yet, so.
It's a bad March.
It's a bad March.
So when yesterday hit, it was just a huge sigh of relief, and I hope it is for a lot of people. It's nice to, it's nice to have the weather starting to come back, and we can enjoy our shoulder season, as the offlanders call it.
I agree.
Amy, we do have Pat Toriel raising her hand, if you want to recognize at this point.
Sure. Pat, do you have a comment?
I do. This is relative to our housing issue, and it's just a basic question which you may not have the answer to. The rental rules in Massachusetts are very heavily weighted towards the renters, with even some language for squatters' rights. I was wondering, is there anything that the town can do to, with bylaws or legislative statements, that would loosen those up and possibly encourage people who are using sections of their property for short-term rentals, seasonal rentals, to open those up for long-term rentals? I know of several who will not rent to long, they won't do a full-time, a year-round rental because of the rules in Massachusetts.
Yeah, I understand that. We do have, unfortunately or unfortunately, wherever side you're on, the state statute allows us to do more but never less. So the state housing code rules the day and really sets our marching orders in terms of what rights tenants have versus landlords.
Okay, so we're restricted by, there's nothing that the town could do?
There might be. I mean, I can ask, but generally speaking, no, we can't, we can't do less than is required by the state housing code.
Okay, just a question, because, you know, it's an issue of concern for homeowners who otherwise might rent full-time and not seasonally. Okay, just wanted to ask the question. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Pat. All right, anything else? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Oh.
Okay, to adjourn.
Thank you.
The current meeting and reconvene as Board of Water Commissioners.
And not to return.
And not to return.
I'll second. All right, we'll vote. Jared?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, we have a pretty short agenda here.
That's real short, but they need it.
So awarding some water contracts.
Yeah, basically. Basically, you're meeting as the Board of Water Commissioners to authorize me to sign the contracts for the two contracts in, are we in D? D, Contract D. Yeah, both to Diggett Construction, one for $3,124,266.73. It's a very specific bid, and that it could have come in, like someone could have come in at 72 cents and won the bid. And the second is for $2,889,064.77. Both Diggett Construction, they were the low bidders.
All right, I will make a motion to approve, or award the contracts to Diggett Construction for Contract 20 and Contract 21 for the amounts listed.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Oh, I just wanted to, I guess, ask the question or point out real quick. I'm fairly certain that Diggett is a local Eastham business, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and I, as, in my years as a plumber and well driller, I met with the owner's crew and everyone at several points. They just do phenomenal work. They're great people to talk to and deal with, and I'm just, I'm just really excited that we've managed to do so much of this project using local businesses. I just, I think that's incredible.
No, you're absolutely right, Jared. So there's only been one contractor in the entire water project that's come in from off the Cape for a water main project, and the tank bid was an off-Cape bidder, but other than that, all of our contracts have been all Cape Cod businesses, which is great. And Diggett's won the last four, so they're on a roll.
Yeah, and apparently they even bought pipe ahead of time in anticipation of getting awarded, so as, you know, prices have been going up, they're trying to anticipate heading that off in the future, so I think that helped them.
Metal pipe will always have value. Don't buy gold, buy metal pipe.
Gotcha. All right, so we have motion, a second, discussion. All right, we'll vote. Jared?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And that's all we had for water.
That's it.
We have, what's, 1,630 connections?
Yeah, with 200 waiting.
And 200 applications waiting.
I'm hooked up.
Woo-hoo. And, yeah, moving right along.
It's going very well. We, both of these contracts came in slightly under, not by a huge margin, but under, and we're, because our SRF funding is a little more, we're pushing roads up, so we're still accelerating.
All right, I will make the motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Any discussion? Jared?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And myself, aye. We are adjourned.
Woo!
Recording stopped.